Yes, they did.
Oh my gosh! Are you okay? Joe, what's up?
We beat Mommy here.
What's up?
Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the council. The city of Long Beach on Tuesday, December 4th, 2018. Senator Mendel.
Yeah.
Senator LaBoire.
Here.
Vice President Diamond.
Here.
President Aral.
Here.
Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the council. The city of Long Beach on Tuesday, December 4th, 2018. Senator Mendel.
The president.
Senator Mendel.
Yeah.
First President Diamond.
Here.
President Aral.
Here.
Uh, Robert, who leads it?
Senator Mendel, President of the United States of America, and the republic of the United States, on my mission, under God, indivisible, for the great king of the heavens.
All right, um, in the interest of time, I'm going to, uh, do the city managers update one very briefly. Um, first, I would just like to let everyone know that David Fraser, our clerk, will be collecting toys for Toys for Tots. Uh, he'll be collecting toys through December 13th. You can bring them to the building, uh, and bring them to the clerk's office, uh, to help those in need. Um, this week, we had our grand menorah lighting, we had our Christmas tree lighting, I see a lot of faces here that were there. Both events were, uh, uh, great and attended widely, um, and just a couple of events that, uh, you know, shines a great light on the city of Long Beach. And then one other item, I'll just announce, uh, the electric bike parade is going to be Saturday, a great event, um, in cooperation with the Chamber and other folks. Um, it'll be 6:30 on Saturday, and the parade this year is going to be led by the New York City Volleyball Championship Team from the high school, uh, so we're very excited. Uh, before we begin, uh, there's a lot of folks here wearing red, um, are all concerned with our health care and, uh, health services here on, uh, our barrier islands, so I'm just going to read a statement. Uh, before we begin, we'd like to address the recent reports that South Nassau Community's Hospital revising plans for the former Long Beach Medical Center site. Since the closure, the Long Beach Medical Center, after Superstorm Sandy, the city council has done everything in our power to obtain the medical services we feel we so desperately need. We've actively advocated to the state's Department of Health and South Nassau, we've met with our neighbors on numerous occasions to hear their collective concerns, uh, many of which are here this evening, and of course, most recently, uh, last week, we did meet. The city's voice has and will continue to be directly and loudly in the conversation regarding, regarding medical services on the barrier island, and we are doing everything in our power. We also must be clear, the New York State Health Department is the regulatory board that decides the status of the healthcare facility. As such, we look forward to working with our local elected officials on the state level, uh, both Assemblywoman Miller and, uh, Senator Kaminsky, um, and ensure Long Beach has the services it needs, and of course, it's not just Long Beach, it's the entire barrier islands. At South Nassau Hospital, it is pivotal to providing the health and well-being of the community, we've requested that they hold community forums to address residents' concerns and questions, and they have agreed to do so. We understand South Nassau will be announcing the first public information session in the coming days, I believe it's scheduled for next week, and we look forward to that meeting to learn their new plans and listen to residents' thoughts and concerns. Um, it's our understanding that they called their first meeting is going to be in the day, um, but they are going to, of course, have evening meetings, as we all know, uh, most of us do in fact work on the day, so, um, we will continue to advocate with everybody here for the best services that we can get, um, and deserve on a barrier island. So, with that, Mr. Fraser.
First item this evening is the resolutions declaring City of Long Beach Re-Agency for Critical Infrastructure and Protection Project declaring said project to constitute an unlisted action and adopting a negative declaration.
All right, uh, President Aral, we'll write up and address the first two items simultaneously, so if they both relate to the critical infrastructure project, and then the city clerk will call at the same hour as we plan. So, uh, just a few short hours ago, at 5:00 PM, I actually completed my twelfth, heard that right, my 12th year of city employment, and I have to tell you, in all that time, I consider this to be the most important signal, which important project, which I've taken part in. To understand why, you sort of have to, you have to be here to sort of experience and bear witness to the almost post-apocalyptic scene that presented upon the city after Sandy, um, and although there were many factors which contributed to that, uh, there was nothing more so than the lack of people that were here after the storm. That in turn stemmed from the fact that we were not able to provide basic services which give rise to modern civilization. Uh, and what do I mean by that? I'm talking first and foremost about the wastewater treatment plant, as Sandy reminded everyone, everyone, uh, without the ability to dispose of waste, can't have community living at all in any capacity. Second on that list is the water purification plan, because there's no extended living without potable drinking and bathing water. Uh, next on the list, we have the electrical substation and the actual gas station, both of which are necessary for modern life. In addition to the LIRR station, which is integrated into the careers and lives of so many people who live on the barrier island, so this project, simply put, is the best chance we have to protect those installations and ensure the city's very habitability, and what I'm talking about is the continuity of life on the barrier island, so I can't think of anything that's more important than that. Just like the $42 million boardwalk and the $80 million dune project, um, the city's been given an extraordinary boost and gift from the people of the United States of America. As was recently announced, we received a hundred percent federal share from FEMA on this project to the tune of $20 million. Now, that's a gift, of course, that we cannot afford to look at in math, so to that end, what we're doing here today is introducing an introductory series of resolutions, by no means is this the end, it's just the beginning, um, but it's the first set of concrete actions you're seeing in place at the council level to advance this project, that's why it's so important. So, without further ado, I'll get to the first resolution, which, uh, entails the environmental review of this project. The city retained the term of, uh, the environmental term, Nelson Poe and Ordees to conduct the environmental impact assessment and take the appropriate steps that are required under the state environmental quality for people act, they're known as CIBRA, as everyone, as anyone who has experienced CIBRA knows, it's one of the most elaborate like statutes out there that you'll ever find. So Nelson Poe came back and made several determinations, the first of which was to treat this actual project as an unlisted action for purposes of CIBRA. What does that mean? It simply means that it's not a type one or a type two action on their CIBRA. A type one action is one that's determined to have a significantly adverse environmental impact, a type two action is one that's been predetermined by the New York State Legislature to not have such an impact, and unlisted is simply one that doesn't fall into one of the two formal categories. So, uh, after that, uh, that determination, Nelson Poe completed what's known as a short EAF, which is an environmental assessment form, and is the, uh, is the minimum of what you have to do if the government wants to declare an action unlisted. The purpose of that is to conduct the actual environmental assessment, that's what they did. At the conclusion of that assessment, they concluded the EAF and issued something called a negative declaration, and that means that they found that there will not be any significant adverse environmental impact associated with this project. And that's all that's required on the CIBRA, that ends the, the process. The one little twist in this case is that normally, uh, for an unlisted negative, we wouldn't have to declare a lead agency like we are in this case, um, and we wouldn't even have to publish our files. We're doing that for a few reasons. Number one, we anticipate financing this project, uh, consistent with the FISA reimbursement for government lines, maybe that will change hopefully, but right now, we do anticipate having to finance this wide幅reinvestment, and we've been advised by God Council that CIBRA filings in such a case must be made express by the legislature. The other reason we're doing this is because of our experiences in litigation with the, in CIBRA litigation with the aquacomplimentium, although we prevailed in that litigation, what we did learn from it and what we were able to draw from it was that, in cases where you don't have to actually, actually publish your environmental determinations, it's nonetheless quick practice to do so anyway, because once the legislature, uh, issues a declaration, that's a type of great deference from the courts, so, um, that typically has a deterrent effect on plaintiffs, on would-be plaintiffs, and especially on would-be plaintiffs in terms. So those are the two reasons why this resolution is formally based. The second resolution, which I'm going to segue into now, is a little bit more interesting in the sense that most people don't know that, uh, the seabed on the Reynolds Channel is actually owned by the town of Hempstead, not the city of Long Beach. Even that portion, which falls within city boundaries, is owned by the town of Hempstead. It's just a, it's a little quirk that goes back to the time, uh, the city was, uh, actually for the time the city was even a city, the city was a village, it was pursued with a deed that was issued back then. So, in this case, that is where we need to construct this project on the seabed of Reynolds Channel, and that's why we need to engage or execute a purchase on the land from Hempstead. Uh, now, we initiated negotiations with the prior county administration last year, uh, we were advised by the supervisor's office to go conduct appraisal, which we did last year, that appraisal came back at $50,000. This year, we were hoping to get on the council agenda a little sooner than we were able, but this is the way things worked out, and, uh, later on, this, this fall, the town decided to conduct an own appraisal, which came back at $60,500. So, the purpose of this item, this resolution, is to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the town for the purchase of the land. The MOU, memorandum of understanding, operates as the functional equivalent of a real estate contract of sale, and it all really contains, the biggest features anyway, are number one, the purchase price, number two, the honor before closing date of March 31st, 2018, and, and number three, it contains an actual deeds and vows description of the property to be purchased. That's the purpose of this, this decision, will allow the city manager to enter into that resolution. So, and with all of that being said, you know, I just want to, I just want to mention that, that projects like this, they don't happen by themselves, they're not accidental, and it takes more than a single person to get it done, this is the result of years' worth of teamwork. We owe a huge debt of gratitude to Governor Quong and Senator Schumer for their leadership, and, uh, speaking on behalf of the city, we all owe a huge debt of gratitude to the partner Public Works, Commissioner Merrick Miranda, and Deputy Commissioner Bravissio in particular, who made part of those efforts in pursuing these funds for FEMA, and successful efforts, I might add. I just hope that I've been able to convey during the course of this presentation, the importance of this project, as well as our eternal enthusiasm and excitement. This is going to be a big one, this is going to be another one, it's going to be transformational, and it really seems to make a difference in people's lives.
Fantastic. Commissioner Miranda, um, would you like to briefly touch on the project? This is, you know, I know we've been talking about it for a while, and maybe just, uh, you know, broad scope, um, and, and also touch on the, how it, uh, will combat some of the flooding issues, especially on Riverside and Pine and over there.
Certainly. Thank you. Uh, this project will install a, uh, a bulkhead that goes well down below the flood line, starting from the end of the recreation property, proceeding past the wastewater treatment plant, proceeding past the water plant, uh, and, uh, then to the Long Island Railroad tracks and the Long Island, uh, the Nassau County Long Beach Boulevard Bridge, and then will end and terminate at the tennis courts on the other side of the bridge. Uh, this project will also include a pump station capable of pumping at a rate of 33 million gallons a day, which will cover drainage basin area that includes from Park Place and, uh, Edwards Boulevard, uh, to, uh, Long Beach Boulevard, from the bay to the ocean, it will take that entire drainage area in. So all the, the drain lines that exist in that existing area will all drain into Riverside, uh, to a 48-inch, that 48-inch main will now be hooked up to this pump station, which will have variable speed pumps that can reach a maximum capacity, as I said, of 33 million gallons a day, and this will pump any rainwater and/or floodwater that is coming into the city at that rate. Uh, so this project covers a good cross-section of the city, and, and not only protects the high tide in the bay, but will protect us from floods in the streets between those areas.
That's fantastic. Um, other news?
And, and one additional thing too, along Water Street, uh, if you go down there, you'll notice there's a lot of erosion there, there's a 48-inch gas main that comes through that piece of 30-inch gas pain distribution main, uh, that supplies gas to the entire barrier beach, the electrical substation is covered by this, which provides power to Long Beach, and it also protects the water main, the 24-inch water main that transmits groundwater to water to the entire city. And if you go down there, you see this is area starting to roll very badly, and it's exposing some of these mains to potential damage, so once this project's finished, that will provide long-term protection for, for all those utilities also.
Great. Um, any questions from the council?
If I can, Commissioner, one of the things that, that we have discussed over the last year and a half regarding this project is the impact that would have on Long Island Railroad as well. What if any, what, what do we kind of explain that as well?
Right, we, we are in the process of finalizing a, uh, agreement with the Long Island Railroad, but we will be building this across the front of their property line, and at the railroad tracks, which would be below the base flood elevation, uh, there is a copper dam system design that the railroad would install once they have all their trains done being used for evacuation, and if they have to keep trains down here for later evacuation, they can protect them with the copper dam.
Thank you.
The land that the gas facilities and the substation on the PSCG National Grid, do they own the land, or do they rent that from the city?
They own that land.
Okay, so will there be anything that needs to happen with them for the bulkhead since it's, it's lacrosse and their land?
Uh, no, negative, because the land, they're, we have to own the road behind that land, so we'll be working on, on the, uh, actually on our boundary line to Hempstead, up to where we purchased a piece of property from Hempstead.
Okay.
So, so it doesn't really affect their property, however, they are cooperating with us in terms of protecting their utilities during construction, and, uh, you know, and upgrading their utilities at the same time, now that they will be protected from erosion also.
Anything, anything else from the council? Anyone from the public? Just on this side here, Ms. Paul Savage.
Senator Paul Savage, morning.
Thank you.
Um, I'm a little confused. I, I agree that it could need to protect the infrastructure here, but the party court in here, whatever happened with the plan for the bulkhead, I mean, you know, you've got this area, but water coming in is going to go right around that, and the canal's on the west end, we get flooded out all the time, I mean, even just from a heavy rain. Is there any, you know, we talked about flood eaves, we talked about all these different things, so when, when are they going to start on that? Because this is great for that area, but water will find a way, if you can't get in that way, it's going to go somewhere else. So, do we have any idea when they're going to start that project?
I think Commissioner Miranda can speak to that a bit.
Yeah, it's another project of the $11 million. Right, that's still a $11 million plus project for a bulkhead on, uh, on public, uh, property and public bulkheads, that will include two bulkheads in the canals. That project is at the 90% design report and is approximately two to three months away from going out to bid, so most likely, these two projects will be being built at about the same time.
Ah, so, um, nothing has been, really, they're done on the north side of all for decades, so with this project, the $11 million, approximately how much, because we do, we understand we need a hundred percent coverage, how much coverage would you, if you had a guess, would we be at, at that point? In terms of new protection?
I couldn't put a percentage on right now, but what would still be offered with any private bulkheads that haven't been raised to the base flood elevation, and one, the last canal in, in Green Canal area, so I'd only be guessing if I did a percentage.
That's fine, that's fine, but we're getting there, okay.
But those would be the areas that could be left on, but then.
With front of bulkheads.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Paul Savage. Anybody else on this side? Yep, one, sir. Name and address.
Uh, Mont Paganini.
Hold on, hold on, go ahead.
Mont Paganini, 62 Long Street. Let me just listen to this, but the groundwater, you know, as these tides come up and you get these storms, by me, I'm in a canal, this is on Long Street, it just driven right through the ground, wherever there's no concrete, you know, it's all raised, this is right through, which is a problem. Now, I mean, I went to, I'm here my whole life, I went to every hurricane, or hurricane down, and, uh, the groundwater issues is made even in the west end, right now, down on Long Street, there's these rains and everything. The groundwater is, wherever there's a tree, by my houses from this lane, there's no concrete, it's full of water. That's the groundwater, it doesn't, this is rain, major hurricane, no matter what we do, I think, Ms. Miranda would say, I mean, I'm looking for an answer of the groundwater problem, it's right at the concrete, right now, right now, yeah, what is it?
It's probably very particularly high right now, normally Long Island experiences, and that would put Long Beach experiences in the range of 42 to 44 inches of rain here, we've already exceeded 60 inches in rain this year, and with the fact that Long Beach originally was five separate islands, and most of the area was built in between the islands, groundwater is always going to be an issue, and with the sea rising, obviously, the groundwater table is going to remain perched, um, so, the, the best that we can do is in these storms is try and provide some onsite drainage, but still have enough overflow to get it out to the, out to the bay or to, you know, and some of these pump stations. We also have an additional project, we also have an additional $1 million project, $1 million project going on in four drainage areas that will help alleviate some of that also.
There's the substation that's down deep, even with the water purification, those pumps that down, I don't know how many feet below sea level, so, I mean, even if we put the bulkheads up, that water's going to come from the underground, do we have extra pumps down there that can handle the water, Dr. Finn, it does?
Well, that's, that's part of this project and part of the drainage project. Additionally, the U.S. Army Corps has partnered with Nassau County, and they're presently doing a $6 million study to study the back bays. The, the marsh area in the back bays is retaining water about 27 out of every 30 days, uh, and really should be only wet a couple of days a year, so the marshes aren't accepting any kind of, uh, you know, flood flow, and one of the items, there'll be two of the items of improvement, one is to dredge as much of the inlet and things that you can, so to allow those marshes to dry out, so that they can absorb some of the storm surge, and in addition, they all look at tide gates, at the possibility of putting tide gates at the Jones inlet and this Rockwell inlet.
And, and one more question, would it be, will it be able to dredge the Reynolds Channel somewhat deeper?
That, that would be the town and Hempstead project, and that would probably be something they'll look at.
I mean, because that would help, that would help. All right, I just wanted to throw an answer to that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on this side with, uh, item, item one and two? Yes. Good evening, Ms. Lee. Name and address. Name and address for the record.
It's the late 2015 Morris Street. This project is quite dear to my heart, being a resident of Long Beach now for over half a century, residing in the North Park community for several decades. That particular area has no like protection whatsoever. I understand the needs of the other communities as well, however, I would just like them to understand if you have a dune, a bulkhead, a jam, that is some type of protection where this particular community, myself as a child, wading through the water to get to the bus stop, sadly to say, my children had to wade through the water to get to their bus stops. So this project, in its entirety, is monumental, not only for the critical infrastructure which serves the city of Long Beach as a whole, with all the utilities, um, the Transcontinental Gap Pipeline, 59102-1, and I actually think they should be high contributors to this project. Anyway, um, Sandy did not disappear, white, black, rich, poor, it didn't matter, Sandy's brother, sister, mother, father, will come again, and all resilience will be based on our preparedness as a city as a whole. So, um, I thank you for this time, and this project goes expeditiously as possible, and I thank everyone for their assistance and time to raise your hands as well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Anybody else on this side? Okay, how about this side here? Sure, Ms. Alas, name and address for the record.
Roy Lesko, Long Beach, New York. Um, I understood what you were saying about, you know, the, the fact that Sandy had won this area and, uh, the pumping station and stuff like that. Now, first of all, it's a pumping, we're no longer, once we move to Bay Park, all we will have is a pumping station?
Wrong type of pumping station.
Well.
The pumping station that the commission is referring to is to pump rainwater through the tide.
No, that, that's the pumps on the other side, that's not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
I'm talking about the sewer pumping station.
Right.
That's going to, once we move to Bay Park, that's all we're going to have, is a pumping station?
Yeah, over the next several years, the wastewater treatment plant will be deactivated, and a new pump station owned by Nassau County will pump all the wastewater from Long Beach to, uh, to the Bay Park Treatment Facility, which has gone under, undergone significant renovations for protection against storm surge, and eventually, on environmental side, all the waste from the Bay Park sewage treatment plant within the next seven years will be pumped over to the Cedar Creek Plant, where it's discharged out three miles out in the ocean as opposed to in the bay, and that will eliminate the nitrogen load and ammonia load to the Reynolds Channel, which will also help with a lot of sediment in Reynolds Channel, and, uh, you know, if they were to dredge it, will help maintain, uh, those levels in Reynolds Channel.
Which is great, thank you, it's really a great thing, but, oh, Nassau's going to put in a new pumping station, or they're going to use ours?
The, the IMI between Nassau County and, and the city has not been finalized, there's a lot of financial issues to determine who will pay for what, uh, there are several grants to, which we've already received, but there are other grants that need to be applied for, uh, some of the pipeline is being built, it's actually going to be going out of bid shortly, in Nassau County's territory to bring that wastewater flow to their plant, but at this point, it's really not enough for the IM, you know, enough details to even discuss who's going to absorb what, but, uh, you, you need to make sure that it fairly But, uh, we need to make sure that it fairly, you know, that we're not paying our own fair share of wastewater removal.
I, I guess where I have a problem is this is a nine-foot wall, basically. Nine, like the base flood level, which is a hundred-year flood, which was not Sandy. Sandy was seventeen. So Sandy, this would not stop Sandy, this wall. Not, not to mention the fact that it would come around the sides and saw salvage, but, uh, but this wall will not stop Sandy or Sandy's mother or Sandy's sister and stuff like that. Now, I understand this is probably all that they're going to finance, but it's a hundred-year. And like you, you know, the people are here because of the hospital, because the hospital has to build it to five hundred-year. Is there any way we can get it higher so that it actually is protective of Sandy?
I, I think it would probably be cost-revenue. I mean, this is what FEMA, you know, has approved for us.
And the pipes that are going to Riverside pump out, is that going to be above the nine-foot level?
No, that's going to pump right, that will pump directly out into Reynolds Channel.
About what level?
Uh, I'd have to look at the plans, but it'll be below the, uh, the top of the bulkhead.
So if the tide is at the top of the bulkhead, will it still be able to pump out?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And the plant also has a generator in benefit of the output.
And is that generator raised?
That generator is above the five-hundred-year flood line.
Great, and, and if we could put the pumping station or Nassau can put it above the five hundred, then we'll get some sort of protection.
Well, just, just so you know too, uh, we also have several hazard mitigation projects going on with FEMA. And those hazard mitigation projects will be protecting specific buildings in the water plant and wastewater plant to the five-hundred-year flood. So in terms of the, the critical infrastructure, then it will be protected. The pumps that have been worked, that are being placed in the pump station at Riverside or at Water Street toward that area, those pumps are all submersibles and will run, you know, submerged underwater, so.
Okay, and when we do this, the bulkhead image around the trains, are we going to have to stop the trains for a while?
Well, it's, it's the, the agreement with the railroad, it will allow the railroad to make the decision as to when else, uh, blockages need to be put in. Because much, the railroad is going to want to be able to help evacuate people and use the trains to get people out of here. So it's going to be a decision that will be made between the railroad and between the city as to when those, uh, those copper dams are closed. So it'll, you know, depend on the emergency and the extent of the emergency and what the evacuation is.
Yeah, what I'm asking though is when that bulkhead is put in around the railroad, are we going to have to disrupt the railroad or can they be put in while the railroad is still running?
No, it, it will not disrupt the railroad. There'll be no shutdown to the railroad while the project is going on.
Okay, and last, the archaeological area, what is that? New York State declared this an archaeological area?
I, I, I'm aware of this.
Okay, it's right in here. Says New York State declared it an archaeological area.
What?
So you don't know? Oh, you don't, you don't? All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with some comments about item one and item two, sort of combined? Critical infrastructure, right? Uh, seeing no hands, I guess we move on officially to number two, is that?
Yep, item number two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the town of Hempstead regarding the purchase of land required to complete the critical infrastructure flood protection project.
I have an amendment, uh, right after this now, therefore be it. I'm going to read this resolved paragraph. Resolved by the city, by the city council of the city of Long Beach, New York, that the city manager be at heat. Hereby is authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the town of Hempstead regarding the purchase of land required to complete the critical infrastructure flood protection project. And be it further, and then the rest of the resolved paragraphs continue unchanged.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Any questions or comments on item two, I wish really went over that list, does anyone else? Oh, seeing no hands.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into contract for the rehabilitation of a failing sanitary sewer line on Riverside Boulevard between East Pine and East Fulton Streets.
Commissioner Morando, could you give us some background?
Yes, uh, we started drawing a lot of sand on the sewer main, drainage sewer main on Riverside Boulevard in East Pine and East Fulton Street. Uh, requiring daily maintenance to keep the water flowing, keep the wastewater flowing. Uh, this may parallel the forty-eight-inch drain line. Uh, so, uh, investigating on how best to repair this, uh, we found that, um, uh, National Water Maintenance Company had a contract with Suffolk County to do cured-in-place uh, replacement of wastewater lines. Uh, we contacted them, we got a copy of the contract with Suffolk County, we went through the prices. Uh, and basically, when cured and replaced, I was supposed to do an open cut next to a forty-eight-inch drain line. Uh, they will come in and clear the line, sand, TV the line, make sure there's no other severe structural failures in the line. And then they will line it with polyurethane liner that has both, uh, two different types of fiberglass resins in it. What they do is they run the polyethylene liner in, uh, backwards from a, from a truck uh, with water pressure and it turns it inside out and puts fiberglass against the existing pipe. Once that's in place, uh, they boil the water which cures the two compounds and we get a new audio pipe inside the existing pipe. Because it's under pressure, anywhere where there's a sewer lateral connection or a house connection, uh, there's an indent. After they pump the water out, they send the camera in and, uh, the camera goes in, finds where the indent is and the, uh, machine cuts the, uh, that piece of the plastic out, that piece of the fiberglass pipe out. Uh, so just to give an example, we couldn't do this with the ten-inch, uh, with the thirty-inch main or thirty-five feet of thirty-inch cheney that we had to just replace on Park because it had already failed. Uh, was a little over three hundred thousand dollars. We're going to replace three hundred feet here of ten-inch for a price of thirty-nine thousand, plus we're allowing the four thousand dollar contingency in case we do find a structural defect that may need to be, be repaired. So, uh, we're hoping, this is a process that's been around for a while. It doesn't always work, but in cases where we can use it, uh, can save the city a significant amount of funds.
All right. Um, any questions from the council? Any comments or questions from the public? Yes, Mr. Lester? Name and address.
Roy Lester, Long Beach. Being that this is the second sewer failure within a couple of months, and being that they, you said that they're using cameras to inspect it, are we inspecting our entire sewer department or is that just too cost-effective to, I mean, sewer models?
Um, we, we don't have the equipment to inspect by camera, but we do track the number of stoppages uh, that we do have in certain lines and we categorize what type of complaints they are. Sometimes in the business areas, there, there's stoppages that result in grease. A lot of times the stoppages result in sand built up next to them. We only know we have a structural issue with the, in the sewer main because we're taking sand and putting it around the area, but we'll get a settlement. Uh, we really need to take a closer look at all our sewer lines in the city, particularly the large Trump mains, and develop a, a more up-to-date replacement program. Um, the, uh, the sewer system's quite old. Uh, a lot of it is concrete pipe, uh, so we get a lot of crown corrosion. Also a lot of it's clay pipe, which means there's joints every four feet, we get a lot of intrusion. Uh, so wherever we can, can do, you know, replace all the sewer mains, we do on our big road projects. But, uh, it, it's definitely a concern, uh, but, uh, we have a pretty good handle on what the problem areas are.
Yeah, but right now, what we're doing is we're waiting until something goes wrong and then we're fixing it. I'm wondering.
Well, that's, that, Mr. Lester, that's really not true because when we do do a road project, such as we did on West Market, West Hudson, what we're about to do on Pacific, we do address these wastewater lines and replace them, uh, with newer PVC pipe. Uh, so it's not that we're not sitting around doing anything, but as long as the sewer line is, you know. Well, that's, that's what it's amblyx, so I'm just trying to, I just want to be, you know, everybody be clear. We are proactive in replacing sewer lines.
Well, also, if I may, Mr. Lester, why don't you just tell that this has failed as well? The document specifically says that it, this sewer main has not, you said, when you first came up, you said that it had. The commissioner specifically said that there's a distinction between this repair and the repair that's determined to be a perfect, I mean, that would be specifically. No, he said that that had already collapsed and this one is not, has not yet. So we're able to do this type, which is less, doesn't have as much of an impact, it doesn't close those streets.
The reason it's been repaired is because something's wrong.
But you said, sir, you just said specifically that it has failed and it has collapsed, just like the last one. Why don't we make sure that the record is accurate for everybody to understand?
Okay, something went wrong with the pipe. What I'm saying is rather than waiting until something goes wrong, is there a way we can check our pipes? That's all I'm asking. Is there a way we can check our pipe? Now, I know that we do replace the pipes when we replace the streets, but we don't replace them in the streets. We have a lot of piping under there. Is there a way? If there's not a way, then there's not a way. But if we, if there's a way to send cameras through it, you know, it just seems to be a more proactive way of addressing this issue. Is that possible?
Absolutely, we could do a sewer system evaluation study where they would do infiltration studies. They would do, uh, TVing the problem areas. Uh, you're probably talking a half a million dollars plus to do that study. It's, it's quite time-consuming because you have to clean pipes when you go with the cameras so you can see what you're looking at. So, uh, you know, it's not a capability that we have in-house. Um, we have in-house capability to clean the pipes, we don't have in-house capability to, uh, to, uh, camp, you know, to TV the, the pipes. So, um, you know, that's.
It's an expensive process.
It's an expensive process.
Oh, okay, pleasure. This is less expensive, I mean, how much did, um, did Park Avenue cost us?
Well, Park Avenue was, uh, a little over three hundred thousand and that's why looking at some of this insured place, uh, uh, type of replacement that we're doing here, you save a significant amount of money. So when we do have a sewer main that is causing much problems, we can go to a contract and actually do this. This contract will expire at the end of the Suffolk County. We will probably in my office put together a requirements contract to do similar type work in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, sir, come on up. Please give your name and address, sir.
John Dean, Long Beach. Um, just, uh, I understand that you're putting a liner inside the existing pipe that has some structural problems, which is why you're doing this. So the question I have is what's the lifetime of the liner? And if there is structural problems on the outside of this, um, pipe, that, uh, of this pipe that's lined with liner in it, what, if the outside of the thing is deteriorating, how strong the liner can hold up? Is, um, if, if, you know, maybe it'll be fine in ten years, maybe it'll be fine in twenty years, or, uh, you know, a replacement might give you fifty or a hundred. So the question is, yes, it may seem like it's a cheap fix, but it might be a more expensive, longer. So I'm, I'm trying to know how we evaluate that sign.
And now, this, using the Citra form, you're probably adding at least fifty years of life to the pipe. Uh, the Village of Freeport did about twenty-four miles of this over thirty-five years ago and they haven't had to replace any of it. When you design the pipe, uh, when you design the, uh, insert of the, the liner that's going to go in, you design it to a structural integrity that can handle the earth forces around it if there was no pipe there, which means you're making a little bit smaller pipe than the, than the existing pipe. However, because it's polyethylene, it has much better flow characteristics and, uh, the, than the cement pipe does or the clay pipe does. So, uh, you, you, you have a different kind of friction loss, so the water flow cuts, so you can allow it to be smaller. The one thing that happens is once you put this liner in too, the deterioration for the pipes has to do with the sewage running through it and creating sulfuric acid on the crown. Once you do this, it stops any erosion of the existing pipe also.
Well, well, that being true, but we all know that the result is standing, that, um, there's, uh, the sand moves, the earth moves, it's cracking the outside on in, which is why the sand goes in. It's not only cracking from the inside out, there's a lot of times with sewer pipes, you know, the stuff that's in there basically coats the inside. So the rotting can be from the outside on in. And so we are going to have this pressure from the outside on this new pipe and nobody forgot.
And again, and again, that's why we designed the strength to be as if it was a standalone pipe. When we design.
I'm just saying that that wasn't discussed, that's what I mean. If you're unfamiliar with.
I could spend hours explaining how it was done, but I'm trying to answer specific questions that you brought up to me.
All right, okay, all right. I, I just want to make sure that I'm not spending forty million dollars.
No, I am very, I am very confident, I'm very confident, based on the experience with the Citra form around the country, um, that this will give us at least fifty years of life on that pipe.
Okay, I think, uh, the rest of the people will be happy with that.
Thank you. Yes, Miss Heschel. Please state your name and address.
Heidi Heschel, Long Beach. Many of us are paying Brady risk. Don't they have those cameras? I mean, they came and used them at my house.
They have cameras for inspecting house ladders. Uh, when you're inspecting sewer mains that are, you know, taking everybody's blow, you have different sized cameras, different sized skids that have to be used and you need a different clarity when you're trying to determine the structural integrity of a pipe and whether there's any joints with roots or anything, things of that nature. So a little type, different type of setup. Most fast idle will all seem so high, uh, you know, so, uh, they, they just have a specialty in doing that. But this takes much different type of equipment.
I thought that might be the case, that this is just for houses, the pipes leading to the street, but wouldn't that be of any help if they did that, their part?
Well, it could be a help in terms of when we do replace, uh, you know, a cured-in-place pipe like that, you know, in the event that when we cut out, uh, the openings for the, for the ladders, you know, it's possible in this one it would help us find out where there's, you know, missed ladders and things of that nature. So, um, it, it could be a help from there, but generally, uh, in my experience with the Citra form, it's, it's, it's pretty clear where the lateral connections are.
Thank you. Maybe they could start doing some of that, though. I mean, it was very helpful in my house and in some other neighbors' houses and if they did that part, maybe there would be less, thank you.
Great. Anybody else have a comment about the Citra form on the sanitary line? Item three, nope, seeing no hands. Uh, next item.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for design engineering services for the rehabilitation of the Long Beach Bus Garage and commuter parking facility.
Okay, so, uh, in the, in the bus parking garage, I noticed a lot of leaking coming down through the upper deck. A lot of this is a result of some of the, uh, joints, uh, starting to deteriorate that hold the slats in place. Uh, so we had a structural analysis done by an outside company uh, to, to kind of give us an idea of what are some of the issues we're facing with bus ground, with bus arrival. There's nothing evident to collapse, there's definitely needed, uh, maintenance and repair on it. Uh, so we put out an RFP to several engineering firms. Uh, to, as a matter of fact, we got six proposals to, uh, uh, to do a design for those repairs so that we could put it out to bid. And six proposals, uh, the prices ranged from thirty-five thousand to one hundred and thirty-six thousand, five sixty. The best proposal in terms of quality and, uh, knowledge was Walker Consultants and their, their proposed price was eighty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Okay, any questions from the council? For the commissioner? Any questions from the public on? Name and address for the.
What is the total amount of your sewer right now?
Eighty-four thousand. Eighty-four thousand for engineering, design services and inspection services.
Okay, and what is the estimate for, that's just for the design?
That's just for the design. The estimate for the repair, just for structural repairs, not including the, uh, repair to the vice, the standpipe system, was a little bit over six hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so right now, we're just in the design phase?
We're just in the design phase.
Okay. The six fifty, that estimate, is that going to be coming down on the FBA plan?
I believe ninety percent of it is, yes.
Okay. Um, I was looking at the stick, and I think, it seems like it would be eligible for a five, three, three-nine, but I see... Did you read the local funding on this? There is, there is something...
The funding was approved in the budget.
It was approved, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, we would have the local match for that?
Uh, we, we will know better when we, uh, when we get the plans and the, and the engineers estimate of the, the construction cost.
But we have eighty-four thousand, okay. And that's in, that's in budgeted for?
Yes, it has. The ten percent match for the entire six hundred and fifty at the time was, was, uh, in the budget.
Okay. Um, and if this isn't done, what is, what is this, what is the urgency on this project?
If this isn't done, it'll continue to deteriorate. And if it continues to deteriorate, it will maybe create some structural issues. We're going to have to shut the garage. Uh, but, uh...
By garage, you mean the parking?
The parking, yes.
The other levels?
Yes. If you notice when you drive up there, I know what's happening...
They're talking to me.
I know what's happening on your bicycle.
Okay.
Uh, you could feel the slabs move and that's because the supporting joint cord on that is deteriorating.
Okay, so, funding a project such as this would take priority over the local match for our many grants that we don't have local matches for. We talked about this in the last city council meeting. So, this is more a priority, keeping private vehicles safe...
This is definitely a safety priority.
That's a priority, keeping vehicles safe over the safety of people walking on our streets.
Well, you know, there are people with their vehicles in that bus garage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, do you have a general idea of how long this is going to take on the projects we're doing?
The engineering and design will probably take four months and then we'll go out to bid, which is probably a two-month process, and then we'll have a better idea based on total work, how long the construction is.
So, it's possible to do that. Possible, okay. And do you have a backup plan for while the garage is being worked on, where people can use it as part?
Uh, I, I understand we're going to be able to work on it by only shutting down small sections at a time.
Okay. Can I just make a suggestion? I'm not sure if this is possible, but we work at Stop &amp; Shop. Parking lot, don't, doesn't the city own that parking lot?
We'll leave the city.
The city owns Stop &amp; Shop lot.
Oh, okay. So, maybe when the garage is down, or, uh, you have any access to the city, large, strong, that lot, that it's...
Hopefully it shall, but I'm sure...
Well, you would unbundle, you could actually unbundle the park and use it for that. Um, you should make a note of that right now.
Thank you. Anyone else with any comments? Yes, sir. Name and address again, sir.
Thank you.
John Dean, Long Beach. I've got a question. How old is this apartment? I don't think it's that old. Maybe over nineteen eighty?
No, it's newer than that.
That's the point of the point, man. For, for, for this parking lot to have this level of leakage and deterioration in this short amount of time, doesn't that indicate that there was some sort of design problem? And doesn't that also indicate that there's been zero maintenance? We tried to maintain it so we don't have this kind of breath or expansion at this particular time? I, I don't, I don't get, we, we felt this, you know, that show, not the whole lot. Doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, we didn't build this garage. This was built by the MTA and turned over to the city.
All right. So, then who, who built it? Why aren't they responsible for giving us substandard equipment? Why are we pursuing, you know, reimbursement from these people that, that put substandard work together? You know, was there, was there, you know? There's no way that a building and structure of that level that's designed to hold thousands of, uh, pounds of these cars up there should be falling apart at this level. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
I agree with you.
So, are we going to pursue, um, money from the MTA? And I know that world just like everybody else. It doesn't matter. Because we're giving, I'm giving money to them to, uh, every time I buy gas, every time I go somewhere else, they're taking money from me. So, I, I want some money back from them.
No, no, it would partially, it would depend on whether there is something substandard, whether there is a design defect, or whether the, uh, the issues have resulted in going weird here.
When should we actually take over the garage, or the parking space?
Three or four.
Four. Wasn't there assessment made of this before we took it over?
I shouldn't say I wasn't employed at that time.
So, in other words, we put a used car that really don't, could write down...
I don't think that's what I said.
But I'm, I'm asking you if we made an assessment, if we had to be assessed, to make sure that we knew that we had a lifetime of, of utilization when we, whatever we spent to get, with it, you know?
I don't think any of us was here, so...
I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to indicate that specifically it's you.
I understand.
I'm talking in general about the city of Long Beach being the manager of assets that have to have a reasonable lifetime for the money that we're spending. And, uh, when we buy something that is substandard, why aren't we pursuing, you know, reimbursement from the people that we purchased? Or what have we? If, if that's not the case, then, then when it was purchased, we didn't do it.
We didn't purchase it.
It was, it was built by the MTA with high understanding and then transferred to the city afterward. The city couldn't build it or purchase it.
I think, I think you answered the question.
It's still, it's still the same thing. You know, we're not, we're not responsible for, for maintaining something that was built in a substandard condition.
I think you, you answered the question. You're arguing presuppose that there was something substandard.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to say that a facility of that nature, I'm going to make this presumption, that if we were to build it, I mean, the city of Long Beach, from today, if we were to build it tonight, right now, would we expect it to be falling apart in two years?
I understand, I, please understand.
The point is, is that we have to do more homework, more preparation, more, uh, legwork upfront in order to not have these unusual and unfortunately, uh, these expenses now and, and we're strapped for money.
I think you raised some really good questions. Sorry, I'm, it's not nice. Um, I think you raised some really good questions tonight, but I think we have to go back in time and have to focus on the fact that this was, this occurred in two thousand and four. And I think you understand that, B. What I think you need to understand is in two thousand and four, the structure at that particular time was not falling apart and was not found to be in any way defective.
No, I agree.
Therefore, obviously, in any building that you have, there's going to be some wear and tear between two thousand and four and when you are...
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. But for us to be at this butching hour, so to speak, um...
Right. We're here now because we recognize...
Yeah, I, I understand, I understand.
Safety, safety of those unionists.
This butching hour, but I'm sure it's done in two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve.
Well, that's why we're here now. We're here to make sure that we do not repeat the mistakes of the past.
No, I understand.
But thank you.
I'm not criticizing you. I'm just talking in general, but the city of Long Beach and NTA needs to, uh, during here now. But whoever was here before had a certain level of fault. Can't believe you're not that, you're not here anymore. But, uh, what can we do to make it better now? What can we do to make the process better than it was before?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? No, I see anyone back here. This is the item of the engineering services called the parking garage. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ray Allen, Long Beach. I, I have the same question with the chef that just got up recording. Um, I remember that, you told me about the construction, the multi-level parking, you know, and train station.
Correct.
That was later than two thousand and four, first of all. Um, that, when you, when you mentioned it and the tradition of it now, that there are actually panels that are walking on your car as you're driving, the first thing that occurred to me was, that's new. In fact, for me, relatively new construction, I think, you know, I live in a house that was built in, um, nineteen twenty originally. So, um, and, and that is much more recent. So, as a homeowner, if I had a construction company that came in and did stuff to my house, and then a few years later, untamed, which I'm sure that it is, um, it started whole and tight, like intrinsically, to the point where you can't even, um, drive on it safely anymore. Why wouldn't we go back to the company that did that construction? I know that you said this was basically a gift from the MTA, the MTA originally constructed. And actually, they probably did, I'm sure, that they need a construction company to come in and build that structure. Why wouldn't we go and obligate the company that built that structure to take some responsibility for the fact that it's not performing the way it should within such a short period of time? Um, I think we could save, um, taxpayers some money if we went back. But we searched who did that, who did this construction. Well, certainly to start with step one, like you said, we're not sure if it's substantial. We're not sure if it's, um, a structural issue that needs to be addressed. Shouldn't that be investigated? And again, then go back to the company that did and make some, um, obliging to, to repair it.
I just, just want to make something clear. You know, we lived in a very, uh, an atmosphere here with a lot of salt water in the air, okay? Metal products cannot hold up well in salt air, okay? There's nothing imminent about the dangers of, of the garage. It's just that typically instructors like this, pin joints and, uh, point joints will start to move a little bit. There's freezing and thorming that goes on. Uh, it rattles expansion joints. Um, you know, so it does occasionally need to, to have a significant amount of work done on it. The other thing is, you know, people can go and say, appoint fingers and engineers or construction companies that did the work. Uh, I'll defer, I'm only an engineer, but I'll defer to corporation counsel. If you want to start going after them and start lawsuits, you'll spend more, more money trying to fight them, to try to put blame on them and possibly maybe be in a liable position where you've criticized them for something that they did wrong.
Right. I took the words right out of my mouth. You asked for a reason. I can tell you that the cost of retaining experts in cases like this are insorted. Um, and it may be, it may very well be a long road to nowhere as well. I can guarantee you, sir, that it would far be, about eighty-four, eighty-four thousand dollar costs associated with this item. So, that is a reason. With the eighty-four thousand, if should we find structural problems or it was built improperly, or, you know, there will, there, there is some liability there, um, then what would happen?
Then we'd have to make a decision based on what the engineers tell us. The engineer is going to do an evaluation first before they start the design. Then in that evaluation, they'll want to indicate that there are, um, you know, design flaws or construction flaws. Then it'd be a decision that the city will have to make as to whether they want to pursue those or correct them. And, you know, what the cost of each is, you know, what the cost of litigation is versus the cost of repairing.
I just have to step one, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Does the Long Island Railroad share in any of the commuter parking fees for the garage?
There are certainly some, there are clearly, we, we remit funds to the city directly.
The way, the way the agreement is structured is that, um, they, they get cavity, uh, fees minus our operating expenses. Our operating expenses usually are higher than that amount, so generally they get nothing back.
Okay. So, then I'm taking in any revenue streams from the...
Okay. Any other questions about the engineering for the, uh, parking garage? I see one more hand. Please state your name and address for the record.
If you're in Long Beach, who built the garage originally? Who was the contractor?
We do not know.
There's no way of finding out?
We could find out.
We just don't know. We don't have the answer right now.
Okay. So, can we find that out? Cause I, I don't know, I recall, maybe, and I'm not, there may have been some affiliation with the structure that was built out of Doorcave that was since collapsed. I believe it's the same contractor, the ride over the name.
What structure?
Uh, parking structure that was built out of, um, Doorcave. And that, that, so, my point is, is that if they had problems and their structure collapsed, and we had the same person that built this structure, maybe it's a little bit worse for us to figure it out.
There's also issues with the garage built in Hicksville, um, through the town board's debate. So, maybe we'll look into those companies. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no hands. Uh, next time.
I have this resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for engineering services in conjunction with the installation of an enclosure over the open air treatment basins.
Busy night.
Okay, that's the treatment plant. Uh, you know, the water that we draw up out of the water acreage is high in iron content. So, that water is all pumped from the A wells to the, uh, to the treatment plant. And, um, the treat, in the treatment plant, it goes through an aeration process to precipitate the iron out. After the iron is precipitated out of the aguanum and is added to it to pump it, it then goes into, uh, these open air settling basins that settle out all the iron. And after the iron is patted off and sent to the wastewater plant, the, uh, water is then sent through sand filters for finishing and treated with chlorine and, uh, pH control. Um, the open end containers that settle the iron out are exposed to the atmosphere, uh, and, uh, really should be recovered. Uh, they present the risk from, uh, actuariological events, from birds flying over, things of that nature. Uh, and in addition, they, in today's climate, uh, one of the vulnerability assessments, uh, that we did on the plan shows that we should really close them to prevent any terrorist attack. So, uh, this is for engineering services to design and build enclosures over those, uh, uh, bases, uh, that, uh, to protect them from any, any type or source of contamination. Uh, we did get five proposals. Proposals ranged from a hundred and fifty-nine thousand to four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars for engineering, design and inspection services. Uh, the highest qualified bidder was H2M Architects and Engineers from Melville. Uh, before we put this middle in, that their proposal, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, we discussed the amount of inspection services we asked for, and they felt those inspection services could be cut in half. Therefore, we're asking for, uh, a hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars, and this money is available in the capital budget.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Commissioner? Any questions or comments from the public? Please state your name and address for the record.
John Phyllos, Wolf Street. Uh, these covers, are they required by the ECA?
This would be regulated by the Nassau County Health Department, and, uh, under the Safe Drinking Water Act, uh, we were required to do a vulnerability assessment, and this was one of the vulnerabilities of our plant. And, uh, this really should be done. Uh, I'm surprised it's not a requirement. In other companies I've worked with, open basins, you are required by health departments to close them. And, uh, I think eventually we would be under the same thing. So, we might as well follow where we really should do and just close them and protect the system.
Does Cedar Creek have a similar facility with these covers?
Cedar Creek is a wastewater treatment plant, so you're not really worried about contamination. This is a water, this is a freshwater treatment plant.
Oh, it's only freshwater?
Only freshwater. This is not the open basins, that's the wastewater plant.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Long Beach, Long Beach, that these are freshwater basins been open?
Just since the beginning of the plant.
Which one?
I'm not really sure how old the plant is. I'm sure it's fifty, sixty years or whatever. They replaced the other systems only in two years, but, uh, I know they had separate treatment plants and then they centralized the treatment. I'm not sure when that happened. But it's been, in my knowledge, you know, from being involved in the water supply field, probably been like that for these thirty years.
Because I, I remember back in the days, I think it was, Glenn Spiritus, when he was the, uh, the city manager, wanting to close them because he was worried about birds flying over and basically pooping in them. And now they're doing it. But that's, that's But that's, that's a concern.
Well, that's not, that's not the only concern.
No, but it's one concern.
One is, sorry. A bigger concern would be some type of terrorist threat.
Okay, so all these years?
Well, you only get two years, so you can only get so much time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Okay, see no hands, next panel.
And six is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing a local law pending the charter of the City of Long Beach regarding assessment, levy, collection of taxes. Designers publication only, hearing will be held December eighteenth at seven P.M. Along to the voting. And one is a resolution declaring the City of Long Beach lead agency for the critical infrastructure flood protection project, declaring the said project to constitute an unlisted action and adopting a negative declaration.
Would you move the option this item?
I will.
Zachary?
I will.
Roy, have you ever been there?
Yes.
Have you ever been there?
Yes.
Have you ever been there?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and I'd just like to thank Commissioner Morando and Corporation Counsel August K.C. for all of our work on, within this project forward. So yes.
And two is resolution authorizing the city manager to enter to a memorandum of understanding of the town council regarding the purchase of land required to complete the critical infrastructure flood protection project.
Would you move the option this item?
I will.
Zachary?
I will.
Roy, have you ever been there?
Yes.
Have you ever been there?
Yes.
First, I just want to thank the commissioner and the deputy commissioner as well as Corporation Counsel for working on this project. I know it's taken a number of years to get all of the pieces together. This project is incredibly important to the neighborhoods that are in that area, as well as all of the infrastructure, including utility lines, sewer, one on the road, as well as other water infrastructure. So I'm happy to see that the project is really, is really moving along. So with that, I vote yes.
Yes.
And three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter to a contract for rehabilitation of a failing sanitary sewer line on Riverside Boulevard between East Pine and East Fulton Street.
Would you move these options this item?
I will.
Zachary?
I will.
I just want to thank Commissioner Morando for the sold-out engineering memory laying tonight. I've had to do this with engineering in a long time. Yes.
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 And four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter to an agreement for design and engineering services for rehabilitation of Long Beach Bus Garage and the commuter parking facility.
Would you move the option this item?
I will.
Zachary?
I will.
Roy, have you ever been there? Yes.
Have you ever been there?
Yes.
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 And five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter to an agreement for, excuse me, engineering services in conjunction with the installation of enclosure over the open air treatment base.
Would you move the option this item?
I will.
Zachary?
Yes.
Have you ever been there?
Yes.
Have you ever been there?
Yes.
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 And six is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing a local law pending the charter of the City of Long Beach regarding assessment, levy, collection of taxes.
Would you move the option this item?
I will.
Zachary?
Yes.
Have you ever been there?
Yes.
Have you ever been there?
Yes.
City manager's monthly personnel report is being filed by the city clerk. We'll make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Zachary?
I will.
Roy, have you ever been there?
Yes.
Have you ever been there?
Yes.
Before I, before I, I thought, I just want to acknowledge Commissioner Morando, I just want to say that for the past two years that I've been working with you, you've worked tirelessly to help all the members of the city council and all of the community to do the advance of effort. And you're just worthy again of saying thank, and worthy of our appreciation. With that, I vote yes.
Have you ever been there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to enter our Good and Welfare portion of the evening. As we know, a lot of folks are here tonight to express concerns over our healthcare here on the island. And you're very young. And we very much appreciate you being here. As we know, there's not too many forums where we get to, you know, give our thoughts. And we're more than happy to host such an event as Good and Welfare, where folks can give their three minutes of thought. We're lucky this evening, we do have, I see all our, both our state representatives here, Senator Kaminsky, Senator Wyman Miller, and we do have Legislative Ford here as well. So again, I thank you for being here. We're going to try and just listen, because I know there's a lot of folks that want to have their three minutes. So we'll move it along as quickly as we can. Okay? With that, we'll start with Mr. Frank McQuaid.
Frank McQuaid, five seventy-three Magnolia Avenue. People of Long Beach have been disappointed, if not deceived, by the devolving plans concerning medical facilities on the campus of the former Long Beach Hospital. They have disappointed us by an abusive application of the so-called alternate use program in which they play fast and loose, allowing the redeployment of grants to repair medical facilities in Long Beach from its original intention. FEMA's alternate use policy is a scandalous piece of legislation and a political sleight of hand that turns dedicated money for good use into a slush fund, rewarding the powerful over the less powerful a proverbial shell game to fund the night it connected rather than the rest of us. It will one day be exposed as a national scandal. There was initial fanfare on the hills of Sandy from our U.S. senators. They took their vows, but they disappeared for further advocacy. Our Congresswoman was invisible. And even our state and county legislators were alternately contrary, indecisive, and unsuccessful. The greatest disappointment and deceiver has been South Nassau Community's hospitals itself. They scooped up the campus for a song and retreated from the original intent of FEMA funds twice. They've stopped serious access and dialogue with the community. These hassas look at us like we're schmotters. But you guys, you guys have the ability to avoid being on the list of disappointers and deceptors, to stand out, to stand up, be champions of our needs by a vigorous advocacy against the shifting plans for the Long Beach medical facilities. Y'all can make a wise use of zoning laws to prevent that campus from being a free-for-all for residential development, a swamp of underutilization in the public good, of what to be a fertile field is heading towards being just tokens short of our needs. And you know, maybe of all the disappointers, all of us, maybe we did not work hard enough or smart enough to prevent our medical assets from deteriorating and not disappearing. We can all take the blame, and we can all take the credit if we did the medical facilities we need. You, the city council, this is a battle. You just can't sit out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Phil Candy?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. I taught in the Long Beach schools for thirty-eight years. I represented Long Beach teachers for decades. And I currently represent the Long Beach retirees, school district retirees, both of them. And I've represented students over my entire career. And I've seen many instances where students and staff of the Long Beach schools have been saved by the Long Beach Medical Center, or minimally had their lives, the quality of life kept where it should be or enhanced by the Long Beach Medical Center. If it was not there, it would have some severe impact on our school population. I know that I'm not a doctor and I'm not a hospital administrator. But I am a teacher, and South Nassau is not giving a very good lesson to our children when they change their plans and renege on proposals and do the money, money which has been so graciously granted to them by the state. And I just hope that all of you and all of us out here would be able to work diligently representing you representatives and our representatives, to bring what we need for our hospital and what our children need. And I thank you to the town.
Thank you. Dr. Dennis? She says Dr. Dennis.
Dr. Ryan.
Doesn't say Dr. Ryan, she says Dr. Dennis. No, Dr. Dennis? Okay. James Kirkland?
I think he'll be here in a second. I might have to wait.
Good evening.
James Kirkland, Long Beach.
Hi.
Second place. Judging from the side of the crowd here tonight, it sort of confirms what the interim elections were pointing at as the number of concern, which was held here, because that seems to be a high button, no matter where you go, whether it's in this country or something else. But along with healthcare, the other equally, I think, important thing is accessibility of healthcare. And right now, we don't have that because the hospital no longer exists. The facility that South Nassau Community Hospital promised us is no longer being enhanced as they had originally set it with me. And, you know, it's unfortunate that our leaders didn't stick up for us, because it was really Schuler and actually the motto, who kind of ended, and I guess, Skeles at the time, who basically didn't fight for us because they all had their own personal interests in what was going on in Nassau. And so their leaders stayed there and sat with the citizens of Long Beach. Now, South Nassau is looking to retract from what they originally promised us, saying that it's too expensive. Well, you know, we had an issue with bulkhead that we thought was going to be able to cover the entire north end, and found out that we didn't have enough money set aside for it. But in the meantime, we're still looking to get those funds because the need for the bulkhead still exists. Well, the need for the facilities that have been promised to us are no longer wish lists, they are things that we still need in order for people to feel like they're going to get the kind of healthcare and services that they require. Now, it's one thing if it was our wish list, but it is not our wish list. South Nassau hired a consultant by Andrew Flack, who came in and did an analysis of the city's demographics and determined that there were certain things that were required. Some of those things happen to be behavioral health, AM surge, sports medicine, physical rehab, dialysis, as well as some other medical services. Now, all of these services that they're talking about and listed, that are listed here by them, are kinds of services that bring in money. They're not the kind of thing that people just elect to do. They're follow-up services to some sort of an event that's already happened in their lives. So people come here, you've got to go to dialysis three days a week, probably go to BT several times a week. And every time you go to any one of these facilities for this kind of money, you're bringing in dollars to them. So it's going to help to offset the cost of this additional expenditure. And since they did get 174 million dollars of our money, they should have enough left to come up with the other 50,000 or so of what they need to cover the costs.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Phil Candy?
Phil Candy, West End, California. Ladies and gentlemen, in October of 2012, Superstorm Sandy took away Long Beach Hospital and with it a significant percentage of the medical professionals on these islands, also gone on a life share of lifesaving medical equipment, making your population of Barrier Island limited access to medical professionals and lifesaving equipment. Now, Long Beach is less than two square miles in area. However, on average, residents might have to travel up to an hour to rent themselves a normal lasting medical resources, including specialists, lab service, and an engine. In 2015, South Nassau Community Hospital, another town home, has sent in a new idea for Long Beach. It goes meeting, they acknowledge that the Barrier Island requires better access to a variety of medical resources, including internal medicine, specialties, imaging, and possibly dialysis. A proposed 25,000 square foot medical pavilion can be built 23 feet above sea level, or meeting the 500-year flood plan, was proposed. Such a state-of-the-art facility was said to be needed so that we could attract highly competent practitioners and encourage residents to seek that location right here at home. Now, one significant event that's transpired and changed the plan is currently, it is proposed that we do an audit pavilion, and that is down from 15,000 square foot proposed. And I understand it's expensive to build to safety codes, but when these feet, South Nassau had the opportunity to get an initial of 20 million dollars in state funds, 23 feet was nothing. We can go do it anytime. Well, FEMA twice approved plans by South Nassau Community Hospital to build and spend funds allocated for a Long Beach medical facility. In each instance, it was a medical pavilion and an emergency department that were approved, not a permanent ED on Long Beach. Long Beach needs both a medical pavilion and an emergency department. Federal funds were approved for this purpose. And South Nassau Community Hospital is in breach of contract with the federal government if it doesn't comply. And something smaller, somewhere else, just wasn't due. So what we ask is if South Nassau decides, the city's got real estate, if the city reassesses the property upwards, insists that any of the construction meet the 500-year flood plan, and limit building by to six stories, in addition, provide, make sure that they provide 1.8 parking spaces per unit when they build there, and declare that this has its intention publicly, and do so before the South Nassau on-site ankle, there will first out of Long Beach.
Thank you. Mr. Phil Candy?
Thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak during Good and Welfare. Most appropriate, as the Good and Welfare of a city also depends on the health and safety of its residents. As our city fathers and mothers, it's your responsibility to act in the best interest. If you feel you need help with this, you can call on your city manager. And to that, I say, this catastrophe that we face now has come at a particularly serendipitous moment. The reason for that is our present city manager is also our police commissioner. His very job description makes him the best person to deal with our
Thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak during good and welfare. Most appropriate, as the good and welfare of a city also depends on the health and safety of its residents. As our city fathers and mothers, it's your responsibility to act in the best interest. If you feel you need help with this, you can call on your city manager. And to that I say, this catastrophe that we face now has come at a particularly serendipitous moment. The reason for that is our present city manager is also our police commissioner. His very job description makes him the best person to deal with our health and safety. Having the authority, he can enlist the services of our fire commissioner, our fire department, our EMTs, our ambulance drivers, our volunteer firemen, to tell him what we need and why we need it, and how to take on anyone who wishes to provide less, especially the fact that South Nassau is getting an additional over $100 million from Mount Sinai. With the power given to you, the city council, you must also call on all the other elected officials that represent this Long Beach Barrier Island. The burden is not only yours. They have to put aside all politics, including monetary contributions to their campaigns. The senators, the congressmen, the assemblymen, the legislators have to know you are either part of the problem or you are part of the solution. There can be no equivocation. It really is as simple as that. A couple of years ago, the issue of drilling for oil off the coast of Long Beach was brought up. All of the right-minded elected officials told Andrew Cuomo, "No." He listened, took the temperature of those that would be affected, and denied a private business from destroying our beaches and our ocean. Now, we have a private, not-for-profit entity keeping us from having proper medical services and access. Each of you have already heard on many occasions all the reasons we are by definition an MUP, a medically underserved population, 35% poverty, dense as population in Nassau, urgent care that don't take Medicaid, heavy traffic in summer, hazardous bridge crossings in snow and rain, 35,000 in population that swells to 100,000 in summer, few doctors, and extremely attractive hazard, our ocean. In addition to our own students, all of Island Park's high school students attend our high school and play active sports on our field. South Nassau waited in two days after the midterm elections to inform us that they are backtracking on their original inadequate plan. Can I wrap it up in two seconds?
Two seconds.
Thank you. You know, time is really important. I totally understand that. Those 30 seconds could mean life or death. And that's a problem we would have getting from Long Beach to the hospital Nassau council. Tonight, you will hear all of the things we believe you, the city council, and all other representatives of the people should do to protect and provide for the health and safety, yes, the good and welfare of everyone on the Long Beach island. Together, you can make a difference. Remember, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Hi, good evening. June Schechter, Long Beach. I have been a resident in Long Beach for 40 years, and I'm lucky enough to say that I also work in Long Beach. We look at West School, I'm a teacher here. The Schechter roots run deep in Long Beach. My children's great-grandfather owned a candy store that was in the corner of Long Beach and Park Avenue. And so, and my son has also bought property in Long Beach. I would say I have a vested interest in our city. My concern is, of course, the change of plan that South Nassau Community Hospital has put forth regarding the emergency center. I've never been a proponent of the idea that Long Beach requires a full hospital. I've watched the decline of Long Beach Hospital over the years into a failing business and into, and one that required pulling clients from all parts of the island with different facilities that didn't necessarily address the needs of our city. The former plan, as was presented to our residents about a year ago, seemed reasonable to me. It seemed like it was a state-of-the-art emergency center with imaging capabilities, MRI, CT, ultrasound, beds for stabilization, a health pad for transport in the case of a dire emergency. And also, I found, I thought that there were plans for the environmental component, that they were making a green space with undulating swells that would absorb storm water and filter it and let it flow out into the bay after being purified by some substrate was marvelous. Just today, after listening to the idea of the flood point, the bulkhead, that will stop exactly where their emergency room is now, and that is not an elevated structure, if you're asking for demolishing that. If in the case of a dire flood, that structure would be underwater because that's exactly where that wall stops, on the 400 block of East State Street. So think about that. South Nassau accepted human money to provide our services. I would like to have them held accountable to that idea. Also, the remainder of the hospital as it stands now is a blight and an eyesore on community. And I would implore Nassau Community Hospital to make good on its previous plans and renovate the structure, giving us essential medical and emergency care. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
First of all, thank you all for meeting.
Barbara, we can hear you.
We can hear Mike, but he can't hear me now. Thank you for meeting with Beach today, the representative from West Elm, West End, the Walks, East Elm, the Fire Department, and our chamber. And we managed to do a very good job explaining the economic impact that the hospital took with it.
And Pointe Le Gueule as well. The representative for Pointe Le Gueule as well.
That's correct. Although we will continue to work as suggested by the council in committee, we all felt that other actions simultaneously must occur because Beach to Bay strongly disagrees with the South Nassau alternative plan proposal, since it will serve to further diminish poverty affordability and access to healthcare services for the Long Beach resident tax group. Beach to Bay believes that the South Nassau proposal is neither a medically sound strategy nor is it legally justified. Members of our board, all of whom are Long Beach residents, initiated a civil suit with the federal with FEMA on July 4, 2016, challenging whether the proposed allocation of over $170 million in sanctuary funds to Oceanside complies with the intent of the alternative use regulations. The court ruled that citizens have no standing and may not sue FEMA. Additionally, FEMA's sovereign immunity gives it power to do whatever it wants without oversight. No solution for residents here either. It seems like FEMA, as Frank said, is just slush money for the rich and powerful. From 2013 to the present, Beach to Bay has tried to solicit leadership from the local council, our assemblyman, our senators, from Kathleen Rice and Senator Schumer and Gillibrand. Nada, nada, niente. Where the elected officials advocated for the return of our hospital, such as Blanco, Biasek, Osenset, et cetera, our hospital was returned. Remember when drilling, as Phil has talked to you about, was to take place off our shores? The community and all the elected representatives were there to fight against it, vomo, vetoed it. Our elected representatives must demand to go back to the original proposal as a starting point for dialogue with the civic leaders, chamber, elected representatives, and others. The comprehensive plan, Long Beach's, reflects the lack of medical services in our city. Once a contractual agreement is signed, we ask the city to revise the comprehensive plan for quality. I know my time is up. I can still hear. Throughout the past year, our elected representatives for this debate can be doing more. Beach to Bay wants that our elected officials come together. This issue affects us all, independent of political affiliation. I can't read the rest, so maybe I'll try to get it printed in the Herald. You pretty much know what I think, and the people here have so beautifully expressed so many of the points. You know that Dr. Groove has all of the reports that we need documented. The Black Report that Mr. Kirkland refers to also has essential information, but you need to understand that it is not an acceptable document. He left out the elderly and the poor, so it's not a fair document. So with that, nothing leaves you than good support. And we'll continue our discussion. Again, it's very positive. By the way, if I can find some other legal precedent to move forward with, I invite you to join or to head that committee. And if not, if there are any lawyers in the house, to work with Beach to Bay's team, legal team.
Thank you. Did I have to see him this evening? Is right by Jack here? Okay, Joseph Naehem? Okay, Mr. Naehem. Mr. Stefan, Kevin?
Hello, good evening.
Carrie B. Spann, 438 Schechter. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of one of the most important groups of people on the Barrier Island, our children. They deserve access to emergency care. Why are we allowing South Nassau to put our lives at risk? They're putting our children's lives at risk. I ask that the city council continue to fight for the residents, especially our children. This money with a lot in Long Beach makes South Nassau a hell of a disaster. Thank you.
Ms. Catherine, agree? Good evening.
Catherine O'Henry, Long Beach. I would like to say a couple of things, so bounce around a little bit. First of all, I've never found the medical pavilion to be a viable alternative to a small hospital. At this point, we have absolutely none, okay? And I think it's a time we know it's the cruel, we cannot trust South Nassau's promises, nor can we trust their numbers. As the last speaker said, as Barbara said before, the statistics in that Black Report were inaccurate. They refuse to count nursing home residents because they aren't Long Beach residents, which is nonsense. They go back and forth to Long Beach Hospital from the nursing home. So their numbers are wrong, their ideas were never good. I felt they were lying to me from the first time I saw something on one of their presentations at the hotel. So I feel at this point, the biggest thing that we need to keep our eye on is the land use part of it. We've all felt for a long time there's something going on behind the scenes here. To build a medical pavilion maybe takes less space than a full, small hospital. I really don't know. But I have filed, I've been processing filing a request from the ACLU to go ask for FEMA for the alternative use clause. I will keep everyone advised of that. In addition, I think we need to consider the fact that the day may come when we need to sue South Nassau. And I would like to know if the city council would be willing to take that on on behalf of the Long Beach residents. It is a quality of life issue. It affects all of us, it affects your families, every single person on this island. And one thing that's been overlooked, I ran into someone who was a recovering heroin addict. And he asked me, he said, you know, are there, I don't know, he said something to the effect of that there used to be beds for recovering heroin addicts at Long Beach Medical Center, and there are none now. And I think we as a city are in the middle of a heroin epidemic. I would like to see beds for heroin treatment in the new facility, and I would like to see a, you know, a comprehensive facility, not just dialysis, not just physical therapy. We need a self-sufficient hospital with beds for people that they can stay over in. So I would like to see more support from the city, and in particular, I would like to see legal support from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Doran Mayen? Good evening.
So, you know, I remember standing outside back in 2014 and listening to the chief of our fire department and the EMTs explain the incredibly increased time that it takes now to get somebody across that bridge to South Nassau, as opposed to the turnaround that we used to have when we had a boat facility here that we could take emergency patients to. At that point, and that was, you know, 2013, I guess, when I first encountered Beach to Bay, seven people have died already since the storm, going over that bridge. It's 2018. How many people do you think have died since then? And I've got to tell you, what compels me to keep coming back here, I know that you've said that you've done all that you can do. That's the impossible answer, because every time I have to sit on that bridge and a crowd of people and a crowd of cars that's waiting behind the opening to wait for the boat to go past, which is apparently the legal precedent. If there's a boat or a car, the boat gets the right of way. We're a barrier beach, we're an island, we are under the constraints of the rules of the bridges. And sitting there and looking up into my radio computer and seeing ambulance pull up behind the crowd of cars, behind the open bridge, behind the boat, they have to wait and wait and wait. And all you can do in this car is sit there and pray for the person in that ambulance, that they're not one of the seven who's even going to cross. You got to sue South Nassau Hospital? I've actually had a response to that, because I think that's what it comes down to. The absolute goal of South Nassau to have it compounded with the funds that they said they were going to put back into the community so that we wouldn't have to deal with that angst of sitting on that bridge and watching ambulance, there's nothing, let me get by. There's got to be something we can do. Please do. Please do.
Good evening.
How you doing? George Pope out of Pointe Gueule. So I don't really want to take up too much time. Everybody really has some incredible things to say. Some things that I haven't heard that I would like to think that may be on the table, it's time to stop messing around. We have blighted property there, it's both in the city's rights. It's within the city's rights to see that it is either remediated or taken over. And I don't think that that should be off the table. This is money that was meant, or at least said was going to be used here. It should be used here. They have not fixed that property. And that is something that we should definitely be looking at. And we should also be prepared that this is not going to be called South Nassau for long. This is going to be Mount Sinai possibly next year. Could be, they're saying, within five years. So you're going to be dealing with a much bigger entity at that time that may complicate things. So while we're local bound, now might be the time to force the issue. Thank you.
Michael Lloyd?
Michael Lloyd, Long Beach City Council members. I'll make it quick. You do have control of zoning. Some people think that you don't have the control. Everything goes to the zoning board of appeals. But whatever the future of this property is, whether it's South Nassau, and I don't know enough about the issue, to be honest with you. Others do. Mr. Kirkland spoke very well. My only point is this. The limited control that you can oversee is the city council that sets zoning codes and approves them. That is your responsibility. And you can't do that. I know you have a comprehensive plan that you've looked at and prepared many years ago. I really think that there has to be a balance of what the needs are in the community to what the medical needs are as well. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. Sam Pinto, speaking on behalf of East Palm Civic. So I'm going to speak on the hospital, just like many of my cohorts have. I'm coming to because I'm not going to talk poorly about South Nassau or what they're doing with their deal or whatever they're doing with their plan. I'm calling and putting in a request to the city council a handful of years ago. Obviously, we love the hospital. And South Nassau said, all right, we're going to take over this project. And they put together a lot of research, a lot of funding, and a lot of studies and information from experts. I'm not claiming to be an expert. I'm not claiming to be a doctor. I tell you how you want to provide medical services. And I don't expect anyone on this council to go up there and say, we need this, we need that, we need a hospital. What I would hope for you, and I'm truly coming to you because you've been elected and you should be our stewards. You should be our champions. You should be our advocates. Things, while this is out of your control, South Nassau is a proud entity. But one thing that I think will be an easier roadmap of working with the hospital, working with the government, working with the residents, would be to call South Nassau and say, listen, you guys, two years ago, did your research, did your studies, did your diligence. You've done sequels. You've done environmental tests. You've done permit reviews and applications. You guys had a plan. You said, we should have this expandable health plaques with an integrated emergency room that can support itself, go up, go down, go sideways. And they said, that's what this community deserves. And now those plans have changed. We don't know what the new plans are. But if their only excuse or their only validation to modifying themselves from sticking to that plan is because of money. I know I read an article that they said that between $48 million or $78 million was spent on this site. That's a lot of money, $48 million to $78 million. I'm not too sure, but with them, the federal government, or the resources they received from the government. But they were given $174 million of reimbursement. So if they just simply ran out of money or found that this become too costly, they could have over $100 million that was given to them to be reimbursed for the one reason of providing medical care on this barrier island. And they should follow through with that. And I think, I implore you, because it's an easy sell. They said, this is what you guys need. They said, we can do this. You guys have to please champion that and say, listen, you had a good plan. It wasn't perfect. It's not a hospital. We understand the climate. But you said this is what the community needs. You said it was feasible. And you have more than $100 million earmarked for reimbursement to replace medical services on this barrier island. And we will hold you to that. So please, elected official, city council, this may not be purely in your control, but it's guaranteed in your influence. You can call the elected officials from the state, from the other resources, from the federal government. You can call South Nassau because I know that they will answer your phone call before they answer mine. So please, be our champions, be our stewards, and make sure that they bring that plan that they said they were going to do. Thank you.
Ms. Fran Nicholson?
You've got to let them know you're here now. Doctor Ryan is here later.
Fran Nicholson, Long Beach. Thank you for allowing so many people to come and speak tonight. I'm not going to speak, say very much because again, as George Pope says, most of it's already been said. But there's a couple of things I'd like to say. I'm wondering if there's one person from South Nassau in the room. Anybody from the hospital in the room. This is a great forum and a great way for us to speak, but we need to be speaking to them. They're the ones that stole the green light. They're the ones that made promises to me that. They're the ones that we all need to go after. Beach to Bay has done a great job. The city has done a great job. I've had over 30 correspondence letters that the city has sent over the past at least six years to South Nassau, to, you know, the state, to FOMO, to assemblymen, congresspeople. My concern at this point is all the letters and all the phone calls and everything that we've done, that you've done, that Beach to Bay has done is almost like it's fallen on deaf ears. So a couple of people talked about LNG. So my feeling at this point is that we all need to band together and we need to take it to South Nassau. I feel like we almost need to do our demonstration. We need to go there. We went to the boardwalk for LNG. FOMO, there were people there. There were representatives there. We had a big showing. FOMO voted the LNG project. It's time to, I know that there's a lot of letters that can be written, a lot of meetings that can be had. But at this point, I feel like it needs to go there. I'm hoping that you with Beach to Bay or somebody will arrange, maybe I'll even arrange, some kind of demonstration sometime, something where we take it to where it belongs. We take it to the people that are not giving us a response and we'll see it. Thank you.
Ms. Carrie Royal Tannich?
President Ronald, while you're coming, I just wanted to just respond briefly to Fran's comment. I just wanted to say that I met with South Nassau and responded to them last Tuesday, November 27. And I asked them, I invited them to be here tonight. So I just wanted to go on record. And it's unfortunate that they're not here to see you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mary Dolce, Long Beach. I'm not speaking on the hospital. I was speaking on another issue. So did you want other people speaking on the hospital?
According to the sheets, I think that's all for the hospital and the city.
Okay. I'm here on Long Beach Day. I wanted to thank Mr. Miranda, Mr. Kana for the lights in the east end. Who else? I forgot. I forgot what's all wrapped up in what I'm going to say. I can't remember. I wanted to thank you for the light. I wanted to let you know. We discussed already the ball caps. And I wanted to let you know those tieflats valves. I know Mr. Miranda, you're sick of hearing it. They do not work. They, really, I have pictures. We did fill an album that I guess, then. I don't know if they weren't put in properly. I don't know if it's Brian DeBoer. But they do not work. And we get constant lice. And it's really disappointing. That's about all we have to say. And if I think of it, I have to write my name on the thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Royal Tannich. I started walking. Mr. Ron Pagani?
Scott Pagani, Long Beach. City council and people of Long Beach, listen carefully. As of March 2018, acting city manager Tagney officially signed paperwork to civil service department to reinstate Mike Robinson to his former job as director of transportation, in which he had resigned in 2009 for not qualifying on his application by having two years of college credits. Civil Service Department okayed Tagney's order in April 2018. This would allow Mr. Robinson to have director status to meet minimum qualification on directive operation test. Meanwhile, in order to reinstate an employee to their previous job, it must be vacant, according to civil service rule 18A. Well, it's not vacant. We now have two directors of transportation. Also, did Mr. Robinson ever get his two years of college credits? The civil service department was used as a tool to get their way. The problem is, they never told the city council and the people of Long Beach about the most important job change in the history of Long Beach, who had taken the duties of assistant city manager, second most powerful position in the city, away from the city council, who would be the only people to control Mr. Robinson as new director of transportation. This position must stay an exempt appointed position, no matter what Mr. Tagney or Mr. Robinson wants. Last night I was here, I said Mr. Robinson wasn't good at what he does. Try this. Under his supervision, in the last six years in the city garage, the city has failed DOT inspection more times under Mr. Robinson than the last 85 years of Long Beach. The city should be getting a letter soon. He just failed again, under his supervision. One more baby point. Mr. Robinson destroyed and demoralized every outside department by letting an out of controlled boss do whatever he wants. Example, rip down cameras. Has not signed in yet. Signed in or out for four years. Company goes as he pleases. Mechanics have no supervision. Nothing gets fixed properly. Now paying someone else high salary to do the boss's job. Boss still does nothing, being paid high salary. It must stop. No wonder we failed DOT inspections and equipment, and equipment not safe all under Mr. Robinson. I don't blame employees, the employees. How do I know? I was a supervisor in transportation. This is just the tip of the iceberg. Also, under current contract between the city and CSCA, exempt positions cannot be in the union. Conflict of interest. Even if you change the name of, change it to medical operation, it's still some work of an exempt. Remedy. Robinson should be suspended pending investigation. Hopefully termination. Thank you.
Ms. Pagani?
Jordine, Long Beach. I've been here before talking about the traffic conditions from New York Avenue to Nevada on West Park. I understand and I'm thankful for the city for working with Nassau County on a comprehensive study. And I know we're going to have to wait for them to see if we're getting traffic control. But in the meantime, with safety and traffic control, true traffic control still in mind, we can install things such as do not block the intersections. That's a state law. There's also a state law for the yield pedestrians. I would like to have those signs installed along West Park Avenue. And put the same of the safety in the residence area. Once again, it's the only residential area in Long Beach that does not have traffic control at every two-way street intersection. And we need to slow them down. And they need to be respectful of the people that walk across or the car that are trying to eat grass on either the side streets or north or south, or their driver's. And so I've been to the traffic department a number of times. And I'm just an opinion. I don't know this is sure. But I'm going to think that they don't have to do anything unless they're told to do something by the city council. So while we're waiting for Nassau County to come back to us with their study and regulations, I'm going to ask the city council to be progressive and say to, remember they have to do it with the city manager or the director of the traffic control. Install these signs for our constituents that live on West Park Avenue between New York Avenue and, you know, West Park. Thank you very much for being patient with me. I'm just beginning. Appreciate the quiet on the X. Thank you.
Gotcha. Thank you. Doctor Ryan?
You probably, Phil?
Dennis Shaw in Long Beach. Dennis Shaw, I apologize for coming late. There was a parent in high school. I know you're around. Your daughter got a nice little award that showed you were a good man and a good man here tonight. Do you regret it? I regret that you gave me this opportunity to speak, and I apologize for my tardiness. For 40 years, I've been working in the schools for the things that have been that long that it's been 40 years. And I don't know what's been said before me, so I hope I'm not repeating. So I will be brief. The kids are getting shortchanged. You know, in terms of what's happening with South Nassau Hospital Pavilion, we've gone through this. The speaker, three or four speakers ago, talked about rallies. There was a rally downstairs about four years ago. There was an opportunity at Lindell to give a vote of help for trustees at Nassau. So I'm speaking on behalf of the kids because I'm sure they're not represented here tonight. But whatever plans are there, they're far, far short what our children need. Whether it's pediatrics, whether it's radiological, whether it's mental health, the kids are getting shortchanged by this, whatever we want to call them, part of South Nassau. So I'm saying on behalf of the school board, we met last night and wanted to make sure that I was speaking on behalf of the Board of Education and not myself. And they gave me green light to say that. So I'm changing hats and I'm going to speak on behalf of myself as a taxpayer, as a citizen, and as somebody who's worked in the schools for 40 years. I don't think you people have done enough. I don't think you've done any better. It's sad to me because I think you had a wonderful chance to advocate. Six years ago, five years ago, four years ago, three years ago. We're in the fourth quarter now and the clock is ticking. And if you people don't stand up now, you're letting down the 7,000 kids in this school district. The 7,000 kids, the 4,000 attend our schools, the private parochial kids as well. And I urge you, I don't like to come into somebody else's term. The Board of Education usually breaks separate with the city council. The Board of Education usually remains separate with the city council. We have an intermunicipal agreement, we sort of help each other out. I'm asking you now to help the kids of Long Beach out, to stand up for them, to advocate for them. They are getting nothing from this, and our needs are tremendous. And we need your help. We need your help, and now's the time for you people to stand up, because for the last six years, I've seen nothing. And I know all of you have not been serving for six years, so I don't castigate all of you. But those before you, who sat here and had six-year intern, have done nothing to advocate for the kids, to do what is right by this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen McInnes?
Good evening, Karen McInnes, one and two Pennsylvania Avenue. I wanted to start out by commending Mr. Arrendo for all his work on the capital projects over the past few years. He's been relentless about lining up projects and correcting problems and action, and inaction by administrations for the past several decades. So in essence, he's basically trying to catch up on capital projects that haven't been done for the past thirty or forty years in ten or twenty years, right? So you know what this leads to, is to a massive increase in our debt. So that's going to take me on to my next part of my conversation. And we can also talk further, this is December meeting. This is actually the third time this year I have brought up this topic. I brought it up at the last meeting, and I did not get a response. Because we are fairly recently bonded to pay operating expenses, we are held to additional financial reporting requirements by New York State Consolidating Law's Local Finance Law 10.10. The chief fiscal officer of the municipality is required to prepare a quarterly report of summarized budget data depicting overall trends of actual revenues and budget expenditures for the entire budget. Such reports shall compare revenue estimates and appropriations as set forth in such budgets with the actual revenues and expenditures made to date. All quarterly reports shall be accompanied by a recommendation by the chief executive officer, i.e. city manager of the municipality, or setting forth any remedial action necessary to resolve any untargettable budget variance included in the overestimation of revenues and the underestimations of appropriations, and shall be completed within thirty days at the end of each quarter. So the last fiscal quarter for the city ended September 30th. So that means that this report should have been completed by October 30th. The chief fiscal officer shall also prepare, as part of such a report, a quarterly trial balance of general ledger accounts. These reports shall be submitted to the governing board, i.e. the city council, and chief executive officer of such municipality, i.e. the city manager, and the state controller. So for the third time, Auntie, I am asking you, have you received the latest quarterly financial reports, city council?
No.
Is that a no? Okay. I'll say it again, this means that the city of Long Beach is not following New York State Local Law 10.10. That means people on the city council who have legal accreditations, including JP's, are now notably not following the law.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McInnes.
My next point is regarding the fiscal oversight responsibilities of the governing board. May I speak? The governing board's role is to oversee the financial condition of this city. You are the governing board.
That's not how it works, that's not how it works. It's three minutes, it won't interrupt the time. Thank you, Ms. McInnes.
My final point, since people usually get to say less than or two, is that in the last, okay, in the city, in the city of Long Beach, single audit report for year ended June 30th, 2017, there are twelve deficiencies related to the audit of the basic financial statements. Three of these deficiencies reported are considered to be material weaknesses. I want to know which city council members are willing to promise me that these twelve deficiencies will be resolved by Election Day, November 2019.
Thank you for your time, Ms. McInnes.
Thank you, Kevin Pla.
Good evening.
So, since you're here in Long Beach, New York. Since it's almost time for a year-end review, a holiday song came to mind, it's called "The Twelve Days of Christmas." I think, once, if you know the tune, I promise you I won't sing it. I'm just going to list out my version of the city's twelve days before the end of the year. It's one year we are waiting for a new city manager. Number two, two key positions are still not, are still vacant. We have three flooded canals and a park street underwater. We have four city unions, some with still without a contract. We have five golden pensions sitting out there. We have a six-floor which is under construction, which means a lot less space for residents to attend. We have seven active civic associations and seven very active Facebook pages, more, both of which do more PR and communication to the residents in the city than the city does. We spent eight million dollars on boardwalk bathrooms, I hope you haven't had to use one lately. We are nine months into an audit, an investigation, and we still have no answers. We have ten-plus growth conventions on the boardwalk, I brought you a piece in the souvenir. We are eleven months till Election Day. We have twelve exempt payouts with still no resolution. And in my Twelve Days of Christmas, we have a thirteenth. We have a South Massa Community Hospital, which nobody seems to know what's going on until now. We have a hundred and fifty million dollars in spending lawsuits, and we are two hundred and twenty million dollars in debt. All I will say is that twenty-nine-two must see change in leadership, in vision, and in direction.
Hey, Ron, this is Lancy. As most people who have been regularly attending city council meetings know, I have been demanding the city release its audit financial statements. These statements detail the financial state of the city, identify issues, and provide suggestions for improvement. These statements were released seven months after their due date and the day before Thanksgiving, and cover fiscal year 2017, which was from July 1st, 2016, to June 30th, 2017. These statements show the city's finances were not weak as the control states, not horrendous as I predicted last meeting, but outright dire. A few highlights from the audit: the city added twenty million dollars to its long-term debt. The city has more liabilities than assets, which means it owes more than it owns. And its fund balance, which is similar to a reserve, has tamped. Myself and many others are still reviewing this over ninety-page report. But there are also some other details, that are details about problems with internal control and management. These problems include not properly recording bus miles and not having an effective form of a conflict of interest policy. A very important line from the audit states, quote, "The city charter requires that elected officials and certain key employees to disclose any conflicts of interest/related parties via completion of an annual statement of financial and ethical disclosure," and on an annual basis. This disclosure is to be provided to the ethics, the city's ethics commission. However, the ethics committee is not actively functioning at this moment. This lack of a conflict of interest policy puts us in violation of numerous state and federal laws. The finances of this city are rapidly deteriorating. The council needs to stop this reckless borrowing, and needs to get on top of their finances. These issues of borrowing and spending go beyond separation payments and beyond this administration. But the council needs to work together and face these and other issues head-on before it's too late. Thank you.
Ms. Judy Bonnie?
Judy Bonnie, Long Beach. I guess before I come to talk to you guys, I came to talk to you about as a former employee of Long Beach Medical Center, who worked in the outpatient substance-induced clinic as a therapist before I got the internship. From the business, there are patients who are not getting services, period. We used to have, definitely reached us actively by just, but we have... Citizens of Long Beach who stuck to addicted problems have no choice. There's only one place they can go. The choice was removed, and none of the plans that I've seen from South Massa even address that situation. We are in the middle here everywhere else, the heroin epidemic, opiate epidemic, really. These people are suffering from disease, it's not a moral failing. And you are their voice, and they need help, they need treatment, they need appropriate access to treatment. And that's what we need, you can get them. They cannot speak for themselves in all instances. And that's just, you know, a great loss to this community, it really is. You stand in that clinic, I have a regular at the Red Clinic, but you know what? State of New York treatment is medication-assisted treatment. That's what works, that's what the science has proven works, and we're not offering it or any ability to get it to our citizens. So that's, that basically. What I really came here to speak about or ask you about is about two months ago, we talked about, or I talked about, can we get together, figure out a way that we can be proactive in terms of what absolutely looks like it's coming down the road despite a lot of opposition from the field, and that is recreational marijuana. Across the street, we have a store that is certainly going to be turned into a marijuana shop, assuming it's legal. You guys have the ability to prevent that right now. In New Jersey, thirty-six communities have opt, and it hasn't happened yet, New Jersey hasn't, it's just on the horizon. Thirty-six communities have opted not to allow the sale of marijuana within their borders. I understand that the dangling of the tax incentives sounds great. But when you break it down, and you look at where there have been experiences in California, the state of Washington, the cost, the community, is also great in terms of medical services, police, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of research, a lot of funding that's been going on in Albany, but there are very few instances that you have local control. And before this gets passed in Albany, before the governor signs it, you guys can do something here and now to help protect our users. If it's here, they have increased access, that's really bottom line. So before this falls under, um... Yeah, okay, I can wrap this one up. Before this winds up falling under state liquor authority, where we then have no local control, nobody even knows it's going to administer it. Please, can we have a conversation? I just, you know, I came to you tonight so that we can at least start the dialogue. There's a lot going on with attorneys, other people on the state level that I can share with you if you want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McInnes.
Thank you, Roy Lasker, Long Beach. I want to thank Eddie Gormans for bringing up that audit and keeping on it. It's really something that's important, and it does give us an idea of what's going on in the city. And also I'd just thank Ron Pagani for bringing up the Mike Robinson, whatever it is. You know, I'm just surprised that we're creating a new position as director of operations, we're making it civil service, and nobody seems to care, but, you know, at least it's being brought up. But I do want to bring up the hospital for a second. I can't really understand the numbers, and I don't know if anybody's asked about the numbers. The difference in the flood plain between a hundred, hundred-year and a five-hundred-year is two-point-eight feet. Hundred-year is eight-point-six, five-hundred-year is eleven-point-four. Two-point-eight feet. Now, we're talking a twenty-five-thousand-square-foot building, I don't know, how many stories was that? Six, someone said? I don't know if that's that many, even if it's three, that's eight-thousand feet a story. And they need an additional, they're claiming they need an additional thirty-four million dollars to raise that whatever it is, let's say it's six-thousand square feet of actual building, you know, assuming it's four stories. The numbers just don't make sense, they don't make sense. I mean, it doesn't cost eight-thousand dollars a square foot to raise something. And has anybody asked them about it? I mean, I'm kind of shocked that South Massa didn't send anybody today. I know they were invited. I'm assuming. I spoke to them yesterday, actually. And, you know, I thought somebody was going to be here, but they're not. But, I mean, I think it's kind of up to you guys to ask them. What are you talking about with these numbers? It doesn't make sense. Now, if they got a hundred-seventy-four million, I don't know if it was a hundred-fifty-four or a hundred-seventy-four that was supposed to go into Long Beach. Yeah, and they say, well, they're complaining because it's going to cost us seventy-four million to do it. But if you look at the numbers, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense that they're talking about raising it. They say it's got to be raised twenty-three feet, I don't see it. I don't see the difference of two-point-eight feet requiring twenty-three more feet of structure. But I really think it's up to you guys to kind of put them on the carpet and say, hey, this doesn't make sense, what is this, for lack of a better word, crap that they're trying to give us? Because that's exactly what it is. And, you know, if we ask them, they're not going to listen to us. But hopefully, if you guys ask them, something will be done. Thank you.
Jay Lasker?
Good evening, Jay Lasker, Long Beach. I'm going to come up here and be completely specific in this speech, I just listened to a couple of these prior speakers, got me wondering, the hospital property, are we currently getting taxes, collecting taxes on it?
No, we're being a need-to-know.
And of course, the logical follow-up, why? Is it because it's a hospital property and exempt? Well, here's the thing, I'm aware from past experience that an existing non-conforming use terminates if that existing non-conforming use goes inactive for a period of nine months. Now, unless that property is specifically zoned for hospital exempt occupancy, and to my knowledge, not craft and疏agstis, you know better? Okay, do you know what it is known for? Okay, and does the non-conforming use not terminate after nine months? I'm sorry?
I said that's an argument that has been used before.
So, to my understanding, I'm not completely coming out of that field with this understanding, all right? So, assuming that to be the case, assuming that that property, which is residentially zoned, has not been used for its current non-conforming hospital use for a period of nine months, that they should have in fact lost their status as a exempt property, yes?
I can't answer that question, man.
Okay, you're a lawyer, should, isn't this something you should be looking into? I mean, we're talking about potentially a lot of money here. Okay, I'm just suggesting, I'm not, you're right, I'm not hit loss, I mean, I do kind of pay a salary, but I'm not hit loss. Same similar argument with the Hebrew Academy on the five and a block of West Broadway. That also has ceased to be an educational exempt institution for quite some time now. That is also a residential zoned property, correct?
I'm not sure what the zoning is on that property, but they're not, they're not developing it as a school on it.
Okay, so, but it hasn't been used as a school, which would continue its exemption for a period of more than nine months, can we bring on that?
I'm not totally sure what the zoning is on that property right now.
Okay, I'll shift back to the hospital property. South Massa erected its emergency facility in a parking lot. That parking lot presumably was... That parking lot presumably was tied to the colonial pavilion. And I must assume that those parking spots that were, that were built over were somehow counted toward the off-street parking requirements for that facility. Now, South Nassau built it and we all understood that a temporary facility was better than no facility. And if they were going to build it in a parking lot or in the middle of the street or wherever they wanted to build it, at that point in time, we were kind of inclined to go along with it. But now it appears that they're not going to do anything. What about the, the off-street parking spaces that have been wiped away by the footprint of that temporary facility?
It's a matter that's going to be obviously raised before the zoning board. I can't take a position on it. If it was some council to be so involved, it could prejudice that, that our position ultimately and scores the city's own ability. So I can't answer that question.
Okay, so, but somebody can't just come down in the middle of what's counting as off-street parking space for a given establishment and just decide to build on it. I have somebody asked to give them the okay to do that?
In terms of leaving off-street parking requirements?
In terms of building on what is allocated off-street parking spaces for another establishment.
Does that have to be served as a grant? That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Lascomore.
Eileen Hesch in Long Beach. First, I would like to repeat what I've said so many times, which is that I think you take full advantage of the people of the community to have more input in committees and so forth, ethics committees, building committees, whatever. You take the teenagers here, the different civic associations. Beach to Bay is a civic association of citizens. They've never given up. Our other civic associations. West Home had that incredible reef thing last week where you can see the reefs on every single boot on the beach. Next week, we have the parade down in the West End. The civic associations do so much. But I'm here to talk about the hospital. When South Nassau took our FEMA money and bought Long Beach Hospital and its waterfront property for a ridiculously low sum, they promised us a state-of-the-art medical pavilion. They took 140 million and left Long Beach with 40 million. Those numbers may not be accurate. Now they say they don't have enough money for the pavilion. They have 140 million of the money FEMA gave them to restore health service to Long Beach. And according to today's Herald, Mount Sinai has given them another 120 million, part of their $400 million capital program, which includes enhancements like a three-story garage while Long Beach residents go without basic care. What happens to people who have no insurance here? The emergency room has to take them in, but they'll also send them a bill. How do people without cars get to South Nassau? We have increases here in mental health problems, drugs, alcohol, suicide problems. Too many things that used to be taken care of and no longer are, especially for those people who are not privileged enough to have health insurance. Hundreds of people lost their jobs at Long Beach hospitals and many doctors left our island. The healthcare of our city is in trouble and action has to be taken. People were up here tonight saying it very strongly. We have not had enough help from you. And it's your job, so please do that. Also, Mr. Agostini, you just said that the hospital is residentially zoned, which is really what scares me because I'm afraid that the comprehensive plan that's been tossed about has something in mind for that waterfront property, whether it's by the people in Long Beach or South Nassau, and that they really want to have a failed hospital there so that they can build condos. The first thing we have to do is get the zoning board to change the zoning so that that is zoned for a health facility and not for residential. And the second thing that we have to do is demand that South Nassau provide for us what they told us we need and what they promised us.
Ms. Amy Power? Amy Power? No? Okay. Well, that's it for this evening. I want to thank everyone for coming and sharing their thoughts on healthcare services here in the hospital. We really do appreciate it. And get up safe.